We just had some technical and individual difficulties, depending on who you are around the table. I'll admit, I was the individual difficulty. I missed a checkbox. Before we begin, can the student board members, can you tell us all your names, remind?
I'm Marcus.
Marcus, okay.
And I'm Unzana.
Say that again?
Unzana.
Unzana?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And then for everyone here, thanks, thanks again for your patience as we begin. So if everyone else is ready, don't have a gavel, so let me do this. I hereby call to order this regular meeting and committee of the whole of the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121 for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Jean, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Demonte?
Here.
Dr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Pope?
Here.
Mrs. Squires?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we could rise for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so first up is, I'm seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Anderson, second by Pope. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Dr. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you. And forgive if I didn't say roll call vote, so there will be some of that stumbling today, so I appreciate your patience ahead of that happening. So I believe I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Weisman for recognitions.
Yeah, I would invite, we have, we had two recognitions planned for today, we're just going to do our staff recognitions, so if we could have Diana and Omar come up to be recognized. So I'm going to let both of these individuals introduce themselves, just tell us who they are, how long they've been working for our school district, then I'll explain a little bit of how the recognition works.
Hi, I'm Diana Alcala. I've been the school social worker, one of the school social workers here at Almond for 21 years. I retired this year.
Oh, congratulations.
I've spent, I've spent 33 years of my career as a school social worker in two other high schools, 12 years in two other high schools, and before that, I was a medical social worker for about a year and a half, and a police social worker for another year and a half. So this by far, being in a school, has been my absolute favorite thing of all. We have a great school community, great teachers that I work with, and fabulous kids.
It's going to take you a little while to get used to retirement.
Big time. I'm all ready.
Thank you, Diana.
Yes.
Omar, can you introduce yourself?
Hello, everybody. My name is Jose Omar Garcia Padilla, and I work over here in Formanes, and I don't have much to say. I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Stay up here, stay up here. So for many years, the village and the mayor of the village have been very kind in recognizing on an annual basis Teacher of the Year, and this year, Warren led the charge in trying to convince the village that they should expand a little bit their recognition program, and so Warren, Gurney, and Woodland both were able to submit and have recognized not only a certified staff member or a Teacher of the Year, but also support staff member of the year. And our pro, the way our process works, it's a little bit different, and some schools, an administrator or a group of administrators just pick someone to be recognized, but at our school, for years, the tradition has been that staff nominate and put together a small just bio of the person, why they're nominating the person, then those nominations go out in a second round to staff, and all staff vote. And so I think the amazing thing here with these two staff members, both of them are, the recognition's really coming from their peers, so when they're walking the hall, the hallways, their fellow educators and support staff members are the ones that nominated for them for this. Both of them were recognized at the village the other week, we did, we recognized them at staff celebration in March, they're recognized by the village this past week, and then also, was it just last Wednesday, just a few days ago, we had a couple board members, a handful of staff come along with them so they could be recognized at the Lake County Educator of the Year banquet. So it's been really great to have them be celebrated in a couple different venues. We're really proud of them. Thank you very much.
And it was really, for those of you, I think it was the third year of the Lake County Educators banquet awards ceremony, and first year I had an opportunity to go, and it was, it was pretty amazing. Yeah, not only was it great to be super proud of two of our own that were up there, but it was amazing to see educators and people that work in schools treated as the stars that we all know that they are. So we pay a lot of attention to sports athletes and others out there, and it was nice to see educators and school staff up on a stage deserving of the same attention that other professions get. So, great job, by the way. Thank you.
Well, Keegan had a lot of, a lot of colleagues that were nominated. I think, so what would be something, like, how could we expand at Warren? Because it was really awesome to see how some of the school districts just had a really big group, and to think that their peers are nominating all those people, you know, like each other, is just amazing. Like, how can we create that here? So more of
Yeah.
our staff is being recognized at the county level.
Yeah, great question. I think most of it is just trying to figure out how to manage the application process as an organization. So last year was the first year that we submitted any names to that. And so it is a little bit of a learning process for our organization. Every nominee has to have a handful of letters of recommendation from certain types of stakeholders. So it's just really a matter of trying to figure out how to manage all of the letters or letter recommendations that have to go into that. Cause you're talking about, for example, there were the two individuals that we had, but there were also
Like, they were hitting every category.
Different cat, like multiple categories.
I'm like, I want to be well, Keegan.
Yeah.
Or were they selected?
In, in, in the reference of, you know, being able to recognize our staff and show how amazing our staff is.
The number of, so we could have nominated many others, right?
Yes.
We, we had no limitation on ours, right?
No, I, I think what you're asking is, is what can we do to expand that? And I think it's just us trying to figure out the application process a little bit more.
Each department, who do you nominate?
I mean, it was the only, it's my understanding, third year, they still were changing things as they go, and probably then internally to every single district in Lake County, they're probably figuring out their own process. So there were definite differences. There were some that had won, and then there were like a Lake Zurich that I felt like I saw 95, probably 95 times. And, but yeah, what's that sweet spot without burdening those that have to do the references and recommendations? Cause that is an extra burden onto our staff.
And how are they selected? Who's selected?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Like, to me, it's very subjective. I'm not sure, is it based on those references? Or, I don't know the answer to that.
Some people turned down, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Anybody that's nominated from a school district is recognized.
Okay.
And then there are, like, there's some overall winners of the category that get a little bit more recognition, and I agree, I don't know those qualifications, but if we nominate someone, they will be recognized on stage at the event.
Which is nice. It's not just the winners that get to go across the stage. Great, good discussion. Thanks for entertaining a little, little talk on that. We're going to move to public comment, I believe is next. So this is an opportunity for the community members to address the board. If there are any audience members that would like to speak at this time, please come forward to the podium. Okay, seeing none, so I'm going to save the rest of my speech then. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, which I am going to make the motion just because there was a light change. So I move to approve the consent agenda items, which include the approval of personnel recommendations for Exhibit A, numbers 104 through 109, and Exhibit B, numbers B30 through B35, as posted. The payment of bills dated May 13th, 2025, in the amount of $1,418,692.26. The regular minutes, regular meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2025, the fiscal year 26, Title I Schoolwide Plan and Waiver Application, the fiscal year 26 Consolidated District Plan as presented, the disciplinary recommendation for Student 2025-11, acknowledgement and acceptance of gifts to the district as presented. Roll call vote, please. After a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Motion, excuse me, motion by Demonte, second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now, I believe I am seeking a motion to move to the committee of the whole. A second.
Second.
Thank you. We'll do a voice vote, for, excuse me, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It moved, motion moved, so we're going to move on now to some of our topics. I believe I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Weisman.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think we're going to go out of order a little bit here because the majority of our guests today fall under the performance monitoring section, so just recognizing them, we're going to do that first, if that's okay. It should be in your slides that are printed the right order, it's just a little slightly different on the agenda. So two things that are on our plan on the page for this year are student champion programs. It's been our My Brother's Keeper program, and we, I'm going to let Trey introduce himself here in a little bit and talk about that program. We did have some students that participated in the program this year that were initially intending on coming, but some last minute hurdles kept them today, so we're going to try to get them at a future meeting. But since we've got Trey here, you never give up an opportunity here from Trey if he's in the room. And then after we talk about the student champion programs, we've got a group here to give us an update on our last big picture learning school visit. These are both things that are on our plan on the page, so we want to use these meetings a little bit more to make sure we're focusing, so these are report outs from that. I'm going to have Rob and Michelle and Trey come up.
Good evening, Mr. Parrot Principal here at the Almond campus. As Dr. Weisman was saying, one of the things that was connected to our 2425 strategic plan and plan on the page was this concept around student champion programs. So last year, we went out and did some research and work and went and saw Trey in action at Mundaline High School, working with a group of students there, myself, Mrs. Bertola, Dr. Weisman, Mrs. Squires, I think that was the four of us that went, I think it was the four, all went, and we kind of walked out of there and said, we have to have that here at Warren. So we entered into this venture in partnership with My Brother's Keeper. So we entered into this venture and partnership with My Brothers Keeper, My Brothers Keeper Alliance, and brought that on with a group of students this year. So a little background, My Brothers Keeper was founded by President Obama, was launched as a program in February twenty-fourteenth. The program sought to address the persistent opportunity gaps, boys and young men of color face, to ensure all young people can reach their full potential. We believe communities are the unit of change to realize improved outcomes for our boys and young men of color. And so research shows that the collective work of the community leaders, members and, and public and private agencies pursuing the same goals for those boys and young men of color can lead to sustainable place-based change. And so with that, we partnered with the Lake County MBK Program. We kind of went through a process and selected some leaders, adult leaders here to take this on at each campus. So Jay McKnight, one of our deans at our Oak Plain Campus, Ms. Bertola, Mr. McNulty, some of you know Ms. Coach McNulty, and myself here at the Almond Campus, kind of did the legwork and administrative work. We had students recommended to us in each grade level. So we thought, or we saw this as a great opportunity to partner our older students with our younger students and develop some internal mentoring. So we ended up with about thirty scholars this year. We met approximately once a month. Our first meeting was here in our district office way back in October, seems like a long time ago. And then we basically met once a month through March and partnered with the Gurney Village Hall and used their boardroom where Trey led some sessions regarding some mentoring and leadership opportunities. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Michelle.
Hey, I have the fun job of introducing Trey. So our partnership with Trey has been amazing. His mentorship for our young men has, I, I can't even describe the growth and the feedback we got from our students on working with him. He's a three-time Emmy nominated spoken word artist. I always say, you're already famous, but never forget us. He's so big time. Scholastic Rising Voice Mentor. He's an author. He's an advisor to Obama's Foundation for My Brothers Keeper. He's traveling all over the country, working with schools. And so we are so grateful and blessed to have him here working with our young men. And so as Rob mentioned, we've met monthly, we met at the Gurney Village Hall, which is neat for especially for, you know, our students to leave campus, come together. And obviously as the principal at Oak Plain, having freshmen sophomores with our juniors, seniors, and just having opportunities for that was really powerful. So we have lots of pictures. I'm going to let Trey kind of share some of the experiences and leadership he provided for our students.
Good evening, everyone. We can do better than that. Good evening. All right, I'm a spoken word artist, so you know, you know.
This isn't the first time you've done it.
No, 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 no. I just, in the spirit of recognition, as Principal Bertola mentioned, I have the honor and privilege of working with different MBK communities around the country. You have some of the top principals in the country in these two. I mean, just a national treasure. And I say that out of a deep place of love. Because the only way this works is if you have an infrastructure that believes in supporting our young men on the backend and the frontend. And these two have been incredible partners, incredible leaders, friends, and I cannot thank them enough for just allowing this to happen. So if we can just give a round of applause for them. So we began this journey in, in October, talking about what it would mean to bring My Brothers Keeper here to the district. And I think one of the biggest things that, that we wanted to emphasize was building community, allowing our young men to experience the power of mentorship, but also start to empower each other. And so each of the sessions were guided by, again, building community, foundations of leadership, empowering storytelling, nonviolence as a way of life, exploring masculinity, and planning for the future. And then towards the end, we have our My Brothers Keeper Symposium. And we'll kind of get a little bit into that. But those are, those are our foundations. Each month, those are our focuses in our sessions. And if I welcomed you into our circle, you would feel the vibrancy of our discussions. You would see young men start to be vulnerable and start to recognize that as a superpower, not as a weakness. And you, and you would also recognize their, their accountability of each other. We start to, we start to see leaders develop in each session. And, and to the point where they were the ones leading our circles. And so it was just beautiful to see. And I, I just have a few kind of highlights that I thought were worth noting and sharing from our experience this year. One of the things that we talked about was making tough decisions. A lot of our young men only have two places. They go to school and they go to that place that they call home, or some, some of them may work. But that third place is so important. And MBK became that third place where they could just be and express and become and develop and listen to each other. A lot of our young men are experiencing real challenges at home, in their personal lives, and they don't always have the safe space to express that. MBK is that safe space. And so we talked about making those tough, tough decisions. We talked about emotional intelligence, vulnerability, like I said before, not fitting in a box. A lot of our young men feel that they have one way to be seen or be recognized or have some form of legitimacy. And we're proving that they can be everything, everywhere, all at once. They're not just a basketball player, they're a scholar. They're not just an incredible student, they're an incredible person. And so we're, we're, we're trying to release some of those external pressures in our circles, in our sessions, and allowing them to experiment with their voice and who they are. Building relationships, building connections, that was huge for us. A lot of our young men, you know, some of them knew each other coming into MBK, some of them didn't. And that, the fact that we were able to connect both campuses was really powerful and instrumental. Seniors learning from sophomores, juniors learning from freshmen, freshmen learning from our upperclassmen. That was an incredible peer-to-peer experience that, that, that we witnessed. And that in turn build that communal accountability. After we set the standard, you know, they, they were, they were the ones forging it. They were the ones holding themselves accountable to who we are, right? Which was, which was very prevalent. Being prepared for the opportunity. A lot of, throughout the course of the year, a lot of opportunities were presented. And we wanted to make sure that our young men were prepared for them, prepared to engage, you know, with, with professionals that look like them, prepare for opportunities beyond high school. Prepare for, for, you know, what, what does it mean to, to be a scholar? And, and not just wait on that opportunity, but, but really attack it with purpose. A big one for us was, was mediocracy versus excellence. MBK is not a club. It's not a, a, a wish wash thing. We hold a high standard. And in order for our boys and young men of color to reach their full potential, we're not lowering the standard, we're raising it. And we're very, very keen on excellency. Excellency in your academics, excellency in how you carry yourself, excellency in your next chapter, and excellency in your relationships. And so we're, we're very, very aware that we can't just be average. We don't have time for that. They don't have time for that. And they know that. And so excellency is who we are, it's a way of life, it's that portrait of a graduate that we believe in. So that, that was a huge emphasis. And then, and then each session, I felt like we, we, we moved as this, the future is now. And so guiding them with the skills and social emotional opportunities to recognize different parts of themselves, so that when they got to the symposium, where all the big shots were there, all the employers, all of the professionals, all the opportunities were there, they were prepared. They were ready. And they did just that. So those are some of the things that I, that I want to highlight in, in terms of our, our day-to-day, what, what did, what did we do throughout the school year? Like I said at, at the top, at the end of MBK, we, we, this was, this was our first year doing this with MBK Lake County. We had our, our countywide symposium in downtown Chicago at Aon, at the Aon Center. Aon's been a great partner for us. And that included all of our six MBK communities. So Warren, Mundaline, Libertyville, Vernon Hills, Walkiegan, and Zion Bennett High School. We're adding two MBK communities next school year, in Lakes High School and Antioch High School, which we're excited about. So that brings us up to eight MBK communities. And it was a, it was a full day of networking, mentoring, skill development. Our young men got to get up in personal with professionals in different industries such as Nike, JP Morgan Chase, our, our, our post-secondary partners in College of Lake County, UIC. And so it was, it was a huge opportunity for them to really start building pathways for their post-secondary journeys. That's one of our milestones. We focus on three. Number one is making sure our young men graduate on time. Number two, making sure that they're graduating with that post-secondary opportunity. We're managing that, we're looking at that. And number three, making sure that they're safe from violent crime. So those are things that we track throughout the year and reflect on. We're going to be having our, our MBK Lake County Action Team meeting coming up at the State's Attorney's Office, where all of our MBK communities will discuss how the year went, what went well, what we need to be working on more diligently next school year. So our MB, our symposium was just incredible highlight of the year, seeing all of our young men for the first time interact with one another. The gentleman that you see at the bottom, his name is Chris Crater, he's, works at the Obama Foundation. He was my mentor when I, I was a participant of MBK when I was in high school, went to Mundaline High School. And, and so, you know, to see that full circle moment was pretty, pretty, pretty impactful. And as you, as you can see, just, just a, a whole lot of connecting, a whole lot of building bonds and breaking bread. And it was amazing, because that was the first time all of our young men saw each other. They're working separately in their own MBK communities, and now they're getting to, you know, connect with one another on a, on a deeper level. Oh, you were working on this, we were working on that same thing too. So just to see them in, in live action, reciprocate all the work that we put in throughout the school year was just beautiful. And, and, and it warms my heart because we, we've been, we've been visioning this a long time. And so the fact that it come to light in MBK Warren being a huge reason why was just extremely special to see. Obviously, we got, we got our group photo there. The two gentlemen you see at the bottom, holding up those certificates, Kyrie and Elijah, actually received the MBK Lake County Leader of the Year Awards by the Lake County State Attorney's Office, yeah. Two, two seniors who just absolutely did a fantastic job this year, taking on leadership roles, holding, holding the group accountable and getting prepared for their, for their next chapter. So I was extremely proud of them, as well as the entire cohort of young men. And I'm excited to see our juniors and our sophomores and our freshmen return as they forge, you know, what this is going to be long-term. So just really, really, really grateful, as I mentioned, I was premature, but there they are. I'm really excited about what, what next year is going to bring. Is that my last slide? Oh, we got, we got, we got a little fun one. Yeah, awesome. So just, I think I'll end on this, things that we're, that we're going to be focusing on next year. Number one is our academic piece. As we're engaging in our data dive right now, we really want to make sure that our young men are exceeding expectations. We, our, our expectation is they're not failing a class entering a session. So they, they cannot be failing a class to join MBK. So they have to have a certain academic criteria. And if they don't meet that, that, that has, that allows us to have an opportunity to have some one-on-one engagement with them to support their, their academic needs. Because of, if they're failing a class, there shouldn't be, you know, they're, they should be focused on that, not leadership development. And so we're, we're, we need to focus on that next year, making sure that that's the case for all of our MBK communities. And we want to make sure that we're holding them accountable to that. And then also, making sure that our young men are safe from violent crime. We had some incidents this year, thank God, not at, not at Warren, to my knowledge, yes. But we had some incidents around the county. Some of our young men just at the wrong place at the wrong time, in the wrong environment. And so we want to make sure that we're, that we're keeping them safe and that MBK is that, is that safe space. So those are things that we'll be thinking about next year. And also our parent involvement. We need to have our parents involved. We need to bring our parents into our circle. We need to, they need to see what goes on. Because if you, if you saw the conversations about, you know, yeah, masculinity, that, that session, I mean, I mean, they, they, the way that they speak about their parents and their caregivers is quite powerful. And I can only imagine if that loved one was in that circle and what that would do for them. So, and a lot of them cited those relationships being, you know, becoming stronger because of their experience in MBK. So we, we need to, we, we got to find even more creative ways to really engage our parents because they're just a focal point of, of our success. So appreciate you all. I love these young men with everything in my heart. I love this community. I love these incredible principals. They are just fabulous. And we got more work to do. So appreciate you all.
I want to give board members an opportunity to ask any questions. Again, we're going to try to schedule a time for the students to come. But if you have any questions or comments.
You say the, the parents get a benefit from the candor. I guess my question is if the parents are in the room, are the kids as candid as they were before?
It's a great question. I, I think, I think we do a really good job of setting the foundation and the guidelines for what our conversations look like. And, and there's, there's a certain, there's a certain togetherness that is created, that if you had a parent join one of our circles, our young men, up to that point, would be comfortable expressing in, in, in that candidness, they would, they would be ready for that. And I think it's important that we, that we don't do that prematurely, right? We wouldn't do that in the second session. We would do that more later down the school year. But we do a great job of, of building that culture of vulnerability and dealing with their complexities to allow them to be prepared for if one of their loved ones were to be a part of that, to open up and, and be vulnerable and be comfortable doing that.
I can probably partly address that because I wanted to say, but when we visited last year, I was amazed at how the, the structure of what you were doing and your way of managing the group, they had, they had these kids exercising critical thinking, writing, reading, public speaking, all while, you know, dealing with emotions and telling very personal stories. And we were four strangers sitting in the corner and we didn't interrupt anything. They, I mean, everybody was doing what they do because of the space that you're able to create. And the, and everybody feels, clearly felt safe to, you know, fully participate with their whole selves. And I just love that so much because I, I feel confident that that's a really important piece of growing up, right? To have space like that. So, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
I just, I just want to say thank you for bringing the program here. Really appreciate all you've done. I know you didn't graduate very long ago from Mundaline. It's amazing to see you.
The goatee kind of gives me some.
Oh, yeah, you can grow your goatee, but we know you're twelve, so. But thank you for, for stepping up in this community because you've really done a nice job. And thank you for recognizing these principals who we love as well. So thank you for all you guys have done. Is there any thought about expanding the number of participants next year? And, and what, what is the sweet spot as far as, because I know too big is too big some days, but what's, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think, I think that thirty number is, is a sweet spot, just for the capacity right now. We would love to have two hundred young men a part of it. But I think with our resources and, and, and staff right now who are, you know, because we have separate teams for each school district, right? I think, along with myself, I think thirty is that sweet spot. However, what's, what's come up is how can we maybe start younger? And I've received feedback, you know, saying, hey Trey, you know, is there, is there a way we can engage our middle schoolers? And is there, is there some partnership that can happen there? Which would, you know, obviously that would take some, some discussion and see how we can execute that. But that would be a way to. But that would be a way to.
Like you're training some up to do it. I see what you're doing.
Right. But so, so that, that is, that has been discussed as a way to expand the numbers. And then, you know, you have middle schoolers who are looking forward to MBK when they get into high school, right? So but I think as of now, I think 30 is, is, is a good number in terms of cohort.
Can I jump in too? We do, we are discussing and have identified possible facilitators to run a group similar next year for young women in the school district. So we are trying to see if we can learn some from MBK and working with the regional office to expand that way.
I was waiting for her to ask that.
I'm cool. I won't do it in public. I'm just kidding. I just appreciate even the steps.
I have just a question, and forgive me if you mention this, but are you here with us, our students for the long haul or are you here to get us off the ground and then with the idea of transitioning somebody in?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I'm here for the long haul.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm. You all can appreciate this. There's some people I just don't trust with children, you know? And, and the, 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 the community that we've built throughout X amount of years to build this to where it's been, I'm, I'm, I'm here for, for the long haul.
Because, and that's wonderful to hear because people seem to speak highly of you and it seems like you've done a lot of good work and programs are just programs.
Sure, sure.
It's really the people behind the programs that make it happen. So if we're seeing this success with you at the home, then we want to continue that with you at the home. So thank you for that. Before we close up this discussion, because I think we're maybe getting to the end of this part, I just wanted, Unzana and Marcus, right? Did I say it correctly? Unzana, thank you. Whenever, since you're student board members here, you can jump in at any point in time, raise your hand, whatever you feel comfortable. But I wanted to make sure and recognize you if you had a question regarding the program. You may know more about it than, since you're students here than, than we do. Do you have any questions about MBK?
Is it the same 30 students that roll over to the next year or are you taking a different group each year?
Yeah, I think, well, so we'll have our seniors who are graduating this year. So our juniors will then take up that senior spot and we'll have new freshmen that, that will be coming in. So, so that will be, that will be our newer population. However, you know, I'm sure there, there are young men who we probably wanted to reach this year. Maybe, you know, because of numbers, we weren't able to. But, you know, we're definitely open, you know, to, to young men that we didn't have this year, you know, re, reevaluating if this is the program for them and having them join next year. Good question.
If we had more staff to like facilitate it, like you were saying, could we like do like two separate groups, like two groups of 30 so then we could still have like, like you said, 30 was like the perfect spot. But like if we still want to have like all these other kids do it too, could we like do multiple groups or?
So, good question. I, I.
Thing at all?
Right, right. It's all great. I'm, 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 I'm right there with you. I think first, I think the goal is to make sure that our freshmen through scene, are, are those, everybody's together, right? Because if we do two separate groups, I think my, our concern I think would be that you would have, you would have one group maybe at, at one level, one group at another level, and they wouldn't see each other throughout the year. And by the time we get to that end of the year, we want to, we want each MBK community to really be on the same page, be acclimated with each other. So I, I think that would be our, our biggest challenge. But I think that, that's a, that's a great question. Because obviously we want to increase the opportunities. But we also want to maintain our standard, right? Because if we get too big and the standard may drop off, right? So we want to make sure that we're keeping that academic integrity, you know, those character points. We want to make sure those are all intact. Because if we go too big, too fast, then, you know, then we might have some trouble with that. So, yeah, I, I think, I think that would be my answer. That, any, anything to add to that or no?
I think we even talked about like having two groups at the, at each of the campuses just because of our structure. Two questions. How many students apply? How do you get it down to 30 and how are they selected? Three questions.
Yeah, no, great. So students, so as a, as a team, we assess through our, through our advisors, who you saw. It's probably best if I go back to that, our team. Oh, there we go. So Jay and Brian, they're the ones who we assigned to really do some outreach in terms of, this is our criteria, right? This is, this is the type of student that we're looking for, which is our young men who are really right in the middle, who maybe are great students, but, but lacking that social emotional space. Or not so great students, but have great character and great enthusiasm and just need a space to bring that energy. So that's kind of our, our ideal student, our ideal young man for this, for this program. So we, we engaged in that criteria and then they did some great outreach to build a roster of 30. We, we, we knew 30 was our goal initially. And so they did a great job of, of really doing some of that. I, maybe, you want to speak more to that or?
That's pretty much it. And then we met with all the students to make sure that they wanted in, you know? I mean, and explain what it was and what to expect. And there's a commitment. And so that was part of it as well.
How often do you guys meet? Or maybe you've said that already.
No, good question. And I just want to add another point to your question. The parents have to sign off as well. So there's a, there's a form that goes out that the parents have to sign to make sure that they're, they know that their child is a part of the program. So that, that, that's also a component. We meet once a month, once a month.
So we had six basically two-hour sessions.
Right, right, right.
I think what I'm going to do is just kind of bring this to a close. And then if there are any other individual questions, we can funnel them through Dr. Danny just to get him answered about the program. Oh, one last one.
Sorry, it's not a question. I did just want to make a comment. Just speaking as a parent, for a student that participates in MBK, it is absolutely a phenomenal program. And I really want to commend the team and the staff for ensuring that it is successful. These type of affinity spaces, particularly for black boys, is so powerful, so powerful. And so I just wanted to commend you all. And I look forward to the opportunities for parents to come in and participate. Thank you.
A lot of praise going on. So expand the program, but do it without losing the quality.
That's right.
So, and thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I got another group that's going to come up while they're walking up. I do want to just give a shout out to, we had multiple board members over the last year and a half that have been part of our diversity committee. Part of the genesis of this conversation was a diversity committee conversation that happened over a year ago. And then a shout out specifically to Board Member Pope and Board Member Squires. I remember Beth texted me one day and said, hey, I'm learning about this program from this guy named Trey. You should, you should connect with him. And Trey was kind enough, like the next week over Christmas break, to do a Zoom call with me and got things going. So I appreciate that outreach. And Susan, as she mentioned, was willing to go visit one of the programs and just kind of be there as we learned about it. So, all right, if we keep going, let's see. Our next group is, punch through here. Okay, so the next, one of our, our next performance monitoring topic is Big Picture Learning Schools Visit. You've heard from a couple of different groups. One group went to Tennessee, another group went to the Bronx and New York. This is our third and final visit that happened recently out to San Diego and some of the great staff members that were willing to take some time away from their families and their work to go do that.
Oh, to go see the good weather.
Go see the good weather. So I'm going to give them a couple of minutes to just share some of their.
Thanks for all your sacrifice.
Hi, I'm Matt Crowley. I'm one of the deans of students at the Almond Campus. Thank you for having us. So we did visit San Diego Met High School. It's part of the San Diego Public School Systems. What we're going to do here is try to kind of encompass our visit, kind of what it was like, what the school was like, some of our takeaways, and kind of how we felt like that could relate to us. So again, kind of a 10,000-foot view. Met is a big picture school. It's a unique format and, and culture. It is a small school. That's not just relative to us. It's a small school relative to the San Diego Public Schools. I mean, if you look here, 120 students, 13 teachers, one classified, one administrator. They do have the advisory system similar to what you've heard about in the other big picture learning schools. And they embrace students' interests. So off-campus, twice a week is what the students are doing through their internships. They also, they're independent study projects. So every internship goes with a independent study project. We actually got to experience what they call Pitch Day. So through those advisories, each student pitches their project to other students, which was a really interesting thing to see. They do outsource some of their instruction. So they are located very conveniently. And we did kind of find through a lot of the other big picture learning schools that this is something that is very beneficial is they're located on a community college campus. So they are located on Mesa Community College's campus, literally 10 feet away from the campus is the high school. So students are enrolling MCC courses to supplement with what Met offers. So students are allowed for free to go to Mesa and take courses to again supplement kind of those, those courses that they have at the Met.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tim Van Lanningham. I am a zero-time Emmy-nominated spoken word. I teach social studies at the Oak Plain Campus. What we, what we saw when we were at the Met was a lot of really interesting things. I've got the slide here with a lot of like green plus signs indicating like, we saw these and we're like, oh, that's really cool. I'm going to kind of go jump around a little bit. Number one and number five, I think actually go together pretty nicely. We saw that a lot of students were really involved in what was going on in their, in their education. And this with number five, we noticed that a lot of times in, in a more traditional classroom environment, you get students who seemingly don't want to be there. They want to shut down. They don't want to engage. But because of the way that the Met was really tapping into student interest and, and getting students off-campus and doing these internships, we saw that a lot of those students that maybe in a traditional setting maybe wouldn't have wanted to engage, they were very involved and they were very engaged in what they were doing and what they were experiencing through their high school, you know, day. Excuse me. We also saw the internships, which we'll talk more about later. Talking about number two right here. We noticed that that was an opportunity for students who maybe wanted to try something that was maybe perhaps related to a future career. But they could essentially test that and see if it was really something that resonated with them. As many of us know, sometimes it takes a couple of years of college before somebody is ready to determine a major or really decide if their idea is really something that, that fits with them. So these students are doing that, you know, in high school, in a public school setting relatively for free. We saw a lot of interesting value in that. Number three is the idea that as they were doing these internships, they were, they were learning a lot of authentic skills, a lot of life skills. We call these soft skills sometimes. You know, sure, they weren't necessarily doing math or stoichiometry or whatever. But, but they were, they were walking away having interacted with adults. They were walking away from their internship, having gained more ability to, you know, plan it, plan for their day, be responsible, you know, those things that are sort of more, for lack of a better word, repeating myself, those authentic soft skills. And then finally, number four, we, we saw that because of the advisory model that they utilized, because of the size of the school, it was very small, there was a very clear connection between the staff and other staff, but then also staff and students. They were very involved with each other. They were invested in each other. Again, all of those things we saw, we were impressed with and we thought was something they were doing very, very well.
Good evening. I'm Deb Perry. I'm one of the deans of the Oak Plain Campus. And the last slide had pluses. Minuses don't necessarily mean bad. But they were just more things that we thought, hmm, interesting. So for number one, having them on a community college campus was phenomenal because students have the opportunity, whether it's in their interest, what they want to do after high school or part of their internship, they can take those classes, which is fantastic. Because they're focusing more on their core courses, there, there wasn't any opportunity for any honors or AP courses within their curriculum based on the size of their school. But we thought that the community college aspect kind of balanced that out a little bit. So that was just something we kind of noticed. As far as the teacher load being heavy, the teacher themselves, there's a teacher for each core, core subject. They are also kind of the case manager for the students who are doing their internships. So there on those two days where students are doing internships, this is where those teachers will go out and visit those sites that the students are doing their internships at. They will also meet with that site supervisor, whoever's over, overseeing that student's internship. So that can create a little additional work for, for that teacher outside of the regular, if we were to say contractual day. So that, that was a little interesting to us as well. The teachers seemed to enjoy it, but you could tell that it does, it does take a toll on that, on that outside school day experience to have to visit all of those sites. And not all the sites are very local. Some could be 30, 35 minutes away out of that San Diego area. So that was something that we happened to notice. Number three, we had differing perceptions, the people who visited in regards to their casual and laid-back culture. We weren't sure if that was specific to the Met program, the Big Picture Learning Program, or if it was just kind of California culture. So we weren't quite sure. Some of us found it really intriguing, while others found it not so intriguing, I guess. We'll say that.
Was it laid back? Were the teachers laid back as well as the students or was it?
Well, and I don't know if it was the sunshine, but the teachers were pretty laid back, which that could be a positive with some of the students that you're working with. Exactly. And the, and the students were pretty chill, which could be fantastic, especially since they're, they're, they seem more engaged with their interest. But some, some of us found it off-putting, weren't sure how other teachers might, might take that casual, laid-back style. So again, we couldn't differentiate if it was just that California vibe or if it was actually the, the program itself, so. But it isn't necessarily a negative when you're looking at the students that, that were helping in that program. The students shared with us, who are part of this Met program, as we were talking to them at their internships, they shared that some of their other peers, perhaps at their other public schools, thought that the school was weird. It was different because it was so small. It wasn't as structured as your regular public school might be. But the students seemed to, to weather that well. Like they, they seemed, well, I'm enjoying what I'm doing. I'm getting a lot out of it. But they did share that. And on their website, this program, this Met program, isn't really easily accessible. It's buried kind of in the bottom of the, of the website, not easy for parents to find or access or maybe even know that this is a program that's available to their student. And there wasn't a real big social media presence. My understanding is that some of the other schools that were visited, those schools had a really big social media presence, always posting about stuff. And this one didn't so much. So it was just something we happened to notice. For number five, students are given a Metro Bus Pass to get to the Met, which they don't have any public-sponsored transportation or school-sponsored transportation. So the issue here is those that have internships that are 30 to 35 minutes away, they are responsible for finding their own transportation. So that's, you know, that was something that we noticed. Some of the students mentioned that some were like, yeah, it's kind of a stressor. And others were, well, I just get a ride from whoever. So it's, it's dependent on where they find their internships. And their internships change each semester. And some, some carry on at the same place depending on if they're, if they're linear and they, and they move, you know, up a level or if they're learning new things. So. But those were just some things we, we were like, hmm, that's interesting and wanted to share that with you. So, thank you.
I'm Joel Lenick. I'm a special education teacher and I'm an instructional coach at the Oak Plain Campus. And we took a look at the strategic plan and thought about some of the things that we noticed and how it might align to the work that we're already doing as a district. So the first thing that we really liked was that it embraces student interest. So the first thing that we really liked was that it embraces student interest. And we had debate about the whole idea of rigor. There's the rigor of the community colleges on campus. But then even just the experience being different, like, within our team, we had different perspectives. And so that was one of the reasons why this was a really cool opportunity, is that it lets those of us who, we've been at this school for a long time, be able to visualize what school could look like that is different than what we're typically used to seeing. We also liked the idea of the advisory. So when we observed the advisory, it was in the context of these internships. So we saw them in the morning when they were sharing about their internships. One thing that really caught my attention is the way that the students called each other into those conversations. There was definitely a level of care and knowledge of one another. Once, you know, they were asking for volunteers to share their internships, and it got kind of quiet for a minute, and students were like, "Oh, you need to share yours. Yours is so cool." And then getting each other going, which was just a cool thing to see. So we think the idea of continuing to have something like that, they're having this shared experience of the internship that kind of drives their work in that advisory, it looked like. But we definitely saw the value of students having that time to be together and have those conversations and support one another and receive support from a teacher as well. And then we had the idea of imagining internship programs for upper-class students. And so we were looking at that idea of, like, we have, like, our tech campus placements. Over the years, we've had different types of internship programs. Some were gen ed, some were special education-focused, and then thinking about, you know, what that could look like for students here at Warren if we had an opportunity for internship during their school day. And then the next was to continue doing these BPL visits or other similar visits where we're able to go and see how people are doing school differently and be able to kind of build our background of what, so it helps us conceive what it could be as we move forward. We had lots of questions, and really, the focus of our time there was the internships. One of the things that really struck me was, one of our, many of us went to the same one. We were at a mortuary with a student. And she went through and gave us the tour, right? It was being videotaped. And at the end, one of the teachers just asked off the cuff, like, "How did you end up here? Like, this is a unique place to be." And she took us through her whole story. And some of the parts, we kind of filled in the blanks that she left. But she started out thinking she was going to be a second-grade teacher. And through that experience, she realized that, "Ooh, yeah, I don't like kids who cry, who vomit, who have snotty," yes. But she knew she wanted to serve people. She felt called to serve in some way. So then she went on to her next internship, and it was something clothing-related, like a Play-Doh's closet type of a placement. And she lives in San Diego. That's not a livable wage, right? It was cool. She enjoyed it, but it wasn't the thing she wanted to do. She was seeing some strength in her science and was taking some college classes at Mesa. And she's like, "Well, maybe I want to be a nurse." So that was really hard. Sometimes these internships can be hard to find because having someone under 18 in certain settings takes some convincing. But she was able to get an internship with a periodontist. And through that experience, she was like, "I found out I don't like seeing adults in pain. It was horrible." She's like, "I never thought that that would be something that would be, like, triggering for me." So then she went to her next, and through her conversations with her mentor, with her placements, she had experienced a lot of loss in her life, and she knew she wanted to care for others. And so the idea came, "You have a comfort in this space because of experiences that you've had. What do you think about trying this out?" And so she went, and what an awesome relationship she had with both her classroom teacher to help get the conversation there, but then also the relationship she had with her coworkers. There is definitely, like, a family feel to the environment. And they really saw her as someone who, she was shining in every aspect of that internship, from the front end of the house comforting people when they came in, to doing the legal paperwork that there's a lot of, to understanding shipping, and there's like a sales component, to actually working downstairs in the morgue and helping prepare the bodies. So like, she had a wide range, and now she, her goal then is, next year, she's going to school for mortuary sciences. But with all those diverse experiences over the course of four years, she was able to find the path there. So that's really the powerful thing that we saw with internships. We saw a lot of other internships, too. I don't know if you guys have one that you'd want to speak to or add on?
Well, I'll just hit on our first initial internship visit. So right when we got there the first day was, we went to a horse farm. And the student that was there, her name was Erin, she had spoken to, and we got a lot of great answers from her because she was, again, our initial kind of visit and how we're seeing things the first time. She kind of, she expressed that, like, you know, "I was a school avoider, and, you know, I didn't like school, and I didn't like traditional schools." So she really expressed that this was kind of a way for her to be still in school, but also look at things that she really, really was interested in. She's like, "I rode horses when I was little. This is something that I've done my whole life." And then she quickly realized, like, her first internship was at a veterinarian clinic. And she's like, "I don't like dealing with animals in pain. I don't like dealing with that side of things, but I still want to deal with animals." And so then she moved into the horse farm, and she was doing excellent. One of the nice things as well is that all the students within that Met program are still allowed to participate in athletics programs. So Erin expressed that she was on the soccer team and that she ran track. And so she would go from her internship to track practice. And I thought that was something that was really, really cool, an aspect where they can still maintain that kind of relation to their home school, if you'd call it that, and still participate in those home school activities and sports and everything like that, and not have to lose that in order to participate in this. So I thought that was a really neat aspect.
Do they go back to their regular high school?
For athletics.
Yeah.
And so it's not, when you think of an alternative school setting, when we think about Warren and when we talk about alternative school settings, we're talking about a very specific space and a very specific population of students who might access those supports, where this is a setting that is, has a full continuum of learners. They said about 20% to 25% of the students there have an IEP or a 504, but over 60% took a college course while they were there, I believe. So it's a wide continuum of learners. And so that was something that was really cool, too, that it's not just serving one specific population of students.
Just finish with your presentation so we can ask questions formally? Or, yeah, I don't want us to...
Yeah, so we just wanted to finish off by saying, we do, we, I know for me personally, this experience was amazing. I know Joy and Tim, I had never, I'd never really met before. So like, going out on these things and being able to, you know, go through these experiences with coworkers, again, because I came in last year, and I've been at Almond that whole time. A lot of my Oak Plain coworkers, I don't know that well, outside of student services. So that was like an amazing thing for me personally. And I think I kind of echo that with a lot of the other people in the group as well. We were able to, you know, not just like socialize, but go through these learning experiences with our colleagues that we would never have been able to have before. And it was just growing my personal network, all of our personal networks, and that was an amazing thing. So we believe the conversations and professional growth are worth the investment, and we hope more staff are able to participate. So what questions do you have?
Thank you. No, I just, I knew there were questions.
Yeah, no, of course.
And I had a feeling that we would prevent you from finishing your formal presentation.
No, no, yeah, we were trying not to be wrong.
Now, board members and student board members, if there's any questions.
Well, I just want to say, the mortuary story is just a pinnacle of what I can appreciate about all these experiences. Like, that you are not teaching mortuary science here. You're not even gonna probably take a class in college. That is probably something she would have never found, and maybe found it in her third or fourth career as an adult, possibly. And so what a service you're doing to students in that setting. And I know they're, it's not Warren Township High School, right? I get that. But when we're talking about reimagining our classrooms and when we're talking about student engagement, which I know we're gonna talk about later on our, you know, data points. And Deb, Ms. Perry asked me about one of our, you know, not-so-interested-in-school students that we have in common as we walked in. And I can imagine him going, you know, somewhere to a marina and doing an internship and falling in love with a career and not sitting in a classroom, getting in trouble because he has absolutely no interest in being there. No offense to anybody. And so this is, it's so exciting. Like, as you talk about the mortuary science, like, I mean, I work in healthcare. It's just the end of healthcare in a lot of respects. And I just really, I can appreciate her experiences, too, because you think you want to do something, you think you want to be in healthcare, but watching people in pain is not for the weak, right? And so there's a perfect fit she would never have found. So thank you for bringing that story here because it makes me excited about what we're trying to do. Like, that is the pinnacle in my mind of, like, what we're trying to reimagine here a little bit. And appreciate you guys, even if it was San Diego. Thank you for taking, say, making the sacrifice to bring that to us. But, you know, I really, I really hope it's still stirring the pot in your heads, like, going forward, like, what, what could we do with this? Because I think there's a lot of potential here, and we have a lot of motivation to do it, so.
We have a lot in our community that will contribute to it.
Yeah, absolutely. We have such a supportive, I mean, you know, I hate to even bring it up, but even after the referendum, like, I think the community has valued the education that's being provided here and the services that we almost lost and now have and want to invest in. And people are engaged with it, and social media has engaged us. And there've been a lot of positives, and I think we could have the support for these programs as well, within Gurnee, outside of Gurnee, Warren Township, and Lake County. I mean, look at Trey's bringing them to Chicago with Aon. You know, like, there's so much potential in Lake County alone with all of our services, so.
That was definitely something that, while we were there, you know, a group of us started just thinking of, like, local businesses and...
Absolutely.
And everything that could possibly come out of those partnerships and...
Your mind could, like, blow up, right?
Oh, yeah, like, yeah, you just start thinking about, there's, you know, there's horse farms right there in Lindenhurst. There's, you know, there's all this stuff, like, because...
If you need a contact, let me know.
Because we're, you know what I mean? Like, we're in a horse farm, and I'm like, wow, this is like 15 minutes north of our school. Like, that is it. That, like, you go south a little bit and you got another...
Actually, it's like two, there's one, two blocks, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, was that Hunt Club and Sturridge Road?
That's the one I used to work at, so.
Like, we have Lake Michigan literally right there. So like, there's just so many possibilities for things like this.
It's exciting.
It's not like it has to be in San Diego or the Bronx to do it.
Other board members?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, it sounds like you were focused on the internships, which is great because that's something we don't have. On the three days that they were not doing internships, did they have a school day that's similar to what we have going on here?
Good question.
Yeah, yeah, good question. So they run a block schedule on those days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It's a 70-minute period. A lot of what they do is they actually combine disciplines. So like, for example, we saw a classroom that was social studies, like a history course, with an English course.
Humanities.
Humanities, sure. That's what they call it. So, yeah, did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And this is an alternative school in the sense that kids choose it, like, it's a magnet school, kind of?
So the referral process was interesting, actually. We started asking about that pretty early on because I was just curious how, like, how a student is referred from their home school to this place. And a lot of it was word of mouth. So I asked a couple of the advisors specifically, because they're like the teachers. When I say advisor, I do mean, like, the classroom teacher. I asked them if they have relations with, like, the home school counselors, the home school, you know, student services teams, and they don't. Erin, our first student that we visited, she said her mom had heard it from, her mom had heard about it from a neighbor who's went there, so.
Yes, but they're opting in, I guess, is my point, okay.
Correct, they're opting in. They're not sent there by their home school.
There's a criteria, there's things they have to agree to, so you're not forced to go there.
Okay.
There's a visit, there's an interview kind of process.
Okay. So could you go back to the schedule? So Tuesday and Thursday, they're out completely all day?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to double-check that. And then Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they're within the school, in class, all of them?
That's correct.
So it's the same schedule for everyone?
And the expectation on Tuesdays and Thursdays is a four-hour amount of time spent at their internship, minimum, so.
Other board members, Natalia, John?
How long do you think it would take to, like, implement the internships and increase, like, the CLC, like, relationship?
I think, I think that what we have are questions. So we would respond to your question with more questions. Because I think that this is a conversation, and this is just Tim Van Lanningham speaking. I think it's a conversation that's very interesting, and we come back with our head spinning, and we're like, "What if?" But that's where we are, "What if?" And so we don't really have answers like that. I don't know.
Seems to me the biggest problem would be, how do you recruit the hosts for internships?
So a lot of that was on students to do that legwork. So now, students find them, but at the end of the day, that mentor, like, that advisor, that mentor, they kind of go through a vetting process a little bit. Obviously, that the mentor at the site has to agree for the student to come in, and they have to have a role that's sufficient and will fill that time. But there is a bit of a vetting process that goes through that.
Is anybody paid?
Students or...?
Students?
No.
And at the end of their semester, like you said, each semester, they may do a different internship somewhere else, unless there's one that is building or scaffolds off of each other.
Does it pay recruit?
That they go find themselves, yep. And then at the end of their semester, they're in charge of doing a culinary, like, a capstone project that they're going to present, and that they also have to have an activity for their classmates, for their teacher, for their mentor, to show what they've learned.
This is self-selecting. You had a special kind of student here.
There's also, if I may add to that, the administrator, the principal guy, whoever he was, he said that, you know, over the years, they've built a network of...
Internships.
Internship peep connections, you know, the people who are kind of on board with this. And so, you know, if there's a student who's struggling, they can kind of go to their rolodex and be like, "Well, maybe this is a good fit. We know this place worked with a previous student."
What are you generally interested in? You might have something that kind of vaguely fills that interest.
So as they're creating, right, the, so as they're creating their roster of internships, I would still think that there's some kind of liability, legality, where, you know, say, like, "Oh, we want to go to State Farm," but then does the district or that school or Met, right, do they have, they have to have some kind of criteria to consider it, like, an approved...
Vetted partner.
Yeah, vetting partner.
We didn't go into that with them, but I'm sure they do.
I mean, I can't imagine that a school is just letting their students go anywhere without any kind of...
So I will say this.
Background check.
I would hope so. One of the, one of these students' internships was at a, and this was during the pitch process. So they do, again, like I said, they do a pitch to their classmates on what their project is gonna be. One of them was working with ex-convicts. So he was in a bakery that hires ex-convicts. And so, I mean, to speak to that, that's a pretty large liability. But that's just for an example of something that would fill in that.
So I'm gonna make a comment and then wrap us up because we still have quite a few things to talk about today. First off, I know we've made a lot of jokes about San Diego.
Mostly me.
But, nah, there was a few of us. But we do recognize the fact that when you're away from your students, when you're away from your families, and you do stuff like this on behalf of the district, it's a, it is a sacrifice, even though it was San Diego, but you are away from your commitments and your loved ones. So as we've thanked the other groups for going on their visits, we want to thank you for going on this visit as well and having an open mind and being able to bring stuff back and kind of explore these things. I guess my comment, since everyone else has had a quick opportunity, I want to just reflect on something, which is, whenever we go on visits, I keep getting reminded, and maybe you saw this too, but not all kids learn the same, not all kids have the same interests. So this kind of format, the couple that we heard about, may work for some kids or that might connect with them or speak to them or match their learning style. But we also need to recognize there's kids that love a classroom environment, too. And as we hear about this stuff, we do have kids that prefer a classroom setting. So I almost keep getting reminded of variants of learning opportunities to match, almost like personalized learning, right? So there's that term of, like, just connecting the type of learning environment with the way that kid learns best and enjoys. So choice, you know, as we explore these things, where does choice fit in? So we're not just doing all one thing at Warren. Maybe there's tracks. Maybe there's, and I'm spitballing here, but maybe there's the title of a class, but there's title of a class, classroom, same title of the class, internship, hands-on, title of the class, something else. So you're, the content's the same, but how you consume it is different. So I love your questions, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you. And then Dr. Danny's gonna keep us going here.
So I'd like us to just move on to a little bit of discussion around next year and the future and planning. There are two topics that I just wanted to touch on and garner a little bit of feedback on today. One is... One is graduation requirements, so we did have a group of staff members who came recently and presented some information to the school board and school board members had some questions for me based on what they shared. Specifically, you as a board asked me to follow up on some data regarding failure rates, hallway presence and full schedules. There's some concern that you had in those three areas around was our, does our current graduation requirement level, is it negatively impacting these three areas? I, I did meet with that, that committee of staff members, our ad hoc graduation committee again, since they came to the board meeting to talk through those points and some additional points. I think I, I wasn't currently able to find any data that specifically connects failure rates to graduation requirements or hallway presence of students or whether or not students are taking full schedules because of graduation requirements. As we talked through that with the staff, I think really probably as opposed to spending time, although we'll spend as much time as you want on data and I'm happy to continue to provide those, something that I think is important is that the discussion around failure rates, hallway presence, making sure kids have full schedules, what the graduation requirements represent, I think really is probably just a, in some way symbolic for our staff that they want to make sure that what we're providing to students here is the highest quality that we can provide. And they want to make sure that if we're doing anything, whether it's about graduation requirements, attendance expectations, using cell phones in class, whatever it is that we're making decisions and policy around, it's done in order to improve the experience that kids have. And Trey talked about high expectations and they want to make sure that we have high expectations for the staff. I think that's where the, I think that's where the secret sauce is and where if we can figure out a way to overlap the different specific aspects of what it means to have high expectations, if we can figure out where that overlaps with all of our different stakeholders and I think that's where we find probably the most meaningful steps forward. So we can talk, I'll talk as long as people want about the data around those three items that you asked me to follow up on and I did provide some information to you in a memo. I think maybe it's more, it's better for us to just spend a few minutes and talk about next steps. I, I do, I do continue to hear from individuals going on the visits and just listening to different stakeholders historically and listening to the school boards. I do think some type of ninth grade seminar or advisory, I do think that seems like it's something that everybody agrees that we could do that would impact our graduation requirements and the way that I, I see that happening. So I am planning on presenting that, I mentioned that in January, but I am planning on presenting a proposal for a ninth grade seminar or advisory this fall and October when we do the regular course proposals. I do, did engage with Big Picture Learning, which is the organization our school visits have been organized through to facilitate that process, to bring in and make sure we've got what our staff is saying seems to work. Someone that can come in from that organization, say, at least have the experience to say, this is what, this is how other schools are doing it, there's hundreds of schools that follow our model. You have to make it yours, but I can't, I can't bring that expertise to the table, so I, I do have an agreement with Big Picture Learning to help us do that. And I have a lot of willing staff from student services and staff that have been on some of these visits to help us get started with that. I, I do think that we're continuing to hear both locally and on the visits that people are going to, that there's some opportunity for growth or in the career exploratory space and whether that's an internship that's out in the community or it's being intentional, more intentional about the types of electives that were, we think students should be involved in here. I think somewhere in there is some career exploratory and experiences.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
So I'm a big fan of surveys, I think I've talked about surveys before. I also think that student voice and, you know, their opinions are very valid and especially what we're trying to do here. I'd like to see the districts send out a survey to get more information about course interests from the, from the, directly from the students. I think that would be, I think that'd be a key point for where we can start.
Great, I wrote that down.
If you guys all agree.
I wrote that down, that's, this is what I'm looking for tonight is just a few minutes on, here's what I think, here's what already is in my brain for upcoming year. Are there other things, so I've got down student surveys, we did get some direct feedback from the diversity audit. That's just asking us to consider whether we have electives that are engaging for students. That would probably have initially been a very adult-led process, but I, we'll figure out how to. I think we can do some type of student-led process.
Can you elaborate on that, that's more engaging for students, like give an example?
I don't know if they, I don't, I, I'm going to have to, I think there are high schools that provide more options in terms of like history classes than we provide now. And some high schools find a lot of traction with students if they're offering a culturally specific type of history class that students connect with, they can say, hey, this isn't just US history, which is a graduation requirement, but if we're thinking about electives, is there, are there some different? Great example, yep, yep, yep.
Thank you.
That would be nice.
Yeah, you could do different math classes too, that are more, you could do math classes that are born towards programming or towards this or, you know, CNC machining and all kinds of stuff, I mean, you can, you know, it's the same math, you just put it in a format, this is something you could actually do with math after you're done, you know? But it's not necessarily a vocation specific, it could just be about different ways that this math is applied while you're learning it, you know, which is a good thing.
But if you're speaking that this feedback came directly from the diversity audit, so we're lifting that that's a cultural piece?
Yes.
That, that we should really look into, so I would like to see some options.
That was definitely the direct message from that diversity audit.
Agreed.
And then I would put forth on here is all the, all the groups that have gone on these big picture learning visits have said we should keep doing this because we learn a little bit. And so I think part of us talking about graduation requirements, if I take a step back in reference to secret sauce, I think what we're looking for is what are the experiences that we can create for students that create the most engaging environments and allow us to really tap what our staff do best, which is connect with kids, help them reflect, learn, grow, create relationships, prepare them for life after high school. And maybe the, the experiences that we give them are different than the way that we provide those experiences. And I, I think maybe one of the things Joy mentioned was it's good and it seems helpful, Tim can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems helpful even for our most tenured teachers to just get out, reflect, learn, think, get some fresh perspective and ideas. And I want to keep the door open so that when we're going to these visits or we're visiting other places, whether it's through Big Picture Learning or otherwise, that, that our conversation isn't so narrow that we're not also, we're not always asking, is this the type of experience that we want our kids to have? So those are the four that I have, I have down a fifth around student surveys, are there other things that?
I'll only go back to, just for a second, about the ninth grade seminar and the hallway presence and some of the issues that are, whether they're big or small or whatever, they're there, I mean, there's issues in the hallways at this school with kids just wandering around when they should be in the class learning something, I mean, we saw that firsthand. And if we're going to have a ninth grade, which we, I hope we have a ninth grade seminar, but that could be when you could also start to set down, this is how we act at Warren Township High School, we don't do this, we don't do that, you can't just all of a sudden take four thousand students and change them, that's not going to happen. But if we could change them one class at a time, you know, we might, you know, put a dent in this, they just feel free just walking out of the classroom and wandering around and running away from administrators and doing whatever they want, I mean, it's just, it's not everybody, I want to make that perfectly clear. I'm not saying it's everybody, but it, it does happen and I don't know how you eliminate it a hundred percent, but we need to try to work at it.
Well, you can start from the freshman, the freshman class and then they become sophomores, juniors, seniors and then the other class.
Maybe, yeah.
You start setting a standard that is followed.
Everybody says start it with COVID, so you got to start it by, you got to start the end by doing something else, something different, so whatever that might be, so I don't.
It's just, uh, hit me, like the concept of freshman seminar is a great one, it really is. Two-campus model, you know, and if we can't do advisory every year, what about a junior seminar? So a freshman seminar and a junior seminar as you enter into each school and they might have a different bend. So freshman seminar might be some of the things you've been talking about, whereas a junior seminar could be career path exploration or what are your next steps, you know, as you prepare kids, that could be baked into that class. So now as they're selecting courses, they're starting to think about, it could be everything from ACT, you're going to take this test and what that means to you to you need to start planning now and here's your steps, so it just hit me, the importance of a freshman could also be a junior and just have one at both campuses and again, part of that could also just be school acclamation, it could be, you could build in the activities, clubs, experiences, people, it could be a nice warm transition into both of our campuses. Lot of fun stuff to think about.
Wouldn't we, I think we would also expect that link crew starting next year would be relevant to some of these things that we're talking about, right?
That's right.
More connection and more mentoring and.
Yeah, and I don't know exactly how that will work, the synchronization between link crew and advisory, but an, an example of conversations that we've had is that link crew, remind me, Ms. Bertola, is groups of ten and the advisory model that Big Picture Learning, the perspective they'll bring in on Big Picture Learning and the advisory model is a group of twenty students. So again, I don't want to commit or over commit, but we're, we're talking actively about are there, is there some overlap there?
I really appreciated what Joy was talking about noticing kids encouraging each other and drawing each other out and this kind of sense of community that seemed to be in that and I'm picturing advisory being a, a lower level version of what MBK is, where you have a sense of community and a, like a sort of a safe space where you feel connected, that's a.
Well, I think it's good for student relationships with one another too, so we talk a lot about the adult student part, but you're coming onto a new campus, it's scary. You don't know where the, it's like freshmen all over again and you're building relationships, a few light, social, emotional or connectiveness lessons. So maybe they can build friendships there and as they go off and at least they have a few kids that they know and sure, absolutely. Any other comments from board members on graduation credits requirements? I do think at some point, like we never intended to keep, just to reiterate this again, never intended to keep it where it's at. It was always thoughtfully bringing these credits back and something I think to challenge ourselves and think about is what more information do we need to start adding some of these things back in, you know, maybe we know enough about where we're heading with career paths at this point, maybe we're holding off till we do a few more big picture school visits, but we might need to start like, you know, making that transition and just kind of stepping into it to get it going, everyone feels, what's that?
I said continuing the conversation.
But it doesn't have to be at the cost of not implementing some credits, so I think we, we sometimes think about this as it's either all one or the other and maybe we move in that direction while continuing the conversation, if we have these, let's, let's talk about a plan to start making this happen. Otherwise, I do agree with some of the sentiment that's been shared in previous meetings, like every year that goes by, we lose that, that's one more year. So if, at least if we, we know what we know now, let's start making a plan to at least build some of these back into, into place.
Well, and seminar brings in one more requirement, right? I mean, that already auto builds in one more requirement.
Yeah, that would, that's my assumption is that if I'm proposing a ninth grade seminar or advisory is that it is a graduation requirement that we can add to the list, yeah.
We also have to consider what's coming as well, I know that the foreign language credit is going to be increasing soon, so we, we really don't want to lose sight of, you know, the decisions that we're making as well.
So the stat, I think the, as I transitioned to some student services conversation, I think probably the big thing that's holding us back on continued development in career exploratory experience is really a staffing. So that will be something that if, if we really want to lean into either internships or just in general programming around career interests and more than just, hey, here are some electives and here's how they align to career interests. We, I will have to come back and ask for us to think about staffing differently. Part of that conversation has been coming out as we, as we look at different student services staffing possibilities, so I'm going to just jump into that and I'll tie career exploratory things into a little bit, but.
I appreciate the continued moving on.
Yeah, and as a reminder, because we've got some people new to the table today or coming back and maybe not been part of the conversations, the board asked me, the board talked about some priorities in my goal-setting process around investigating a looping model. They had four basic priorities that you provided to me, creating a different experience for students, opportunities for consistent relationships, students transition from a plane to almond, ways that we can make that, consider ways that we could make that transition easier and a possibility that at least investigating a looping model might help us focus our system efforts on a four-year outlook. So a looping model, for those that haven't been here, is different than our current staffing model for student services. Currently of us, I have these little, this little children, I guess, here at the top and they represent students. And in our current staffing model, students have counselor, social worker and dean their ninth and tenth grade year. And then when they move campuses, that changes and they are assigned to a new dean, a new counselor and a new social worker. In a looping model that we've taken a year and investigate, to investigate, instead of staff being assigned by alphabetic, you know, alphabetically for last name, those teams of counselors, social workers, deans, maybe the psychologists are assigned to a graduating class. And so the student has that core group of adults that they're working with, not just their ninth and tenth grade, but then the staff group moves with them to eleventh and twelfth grade. And then when that group of staff graduate that class, they loop back and pick up a new ninth grade group. So I did provide, we've been working for probably six months or so on some investigation, I did provide a summary memo to the school board for that. I do think that this is a good model, I do think it's a good model, I think it's financially feasible. If one of the priorities that you're creating or that you've discussed and you want us to consider as an organization is the relationships that students have with adults and the relationships that families have with adults, I think this is a really good model to consider. I would recommend that you consider adopting that type of model. I do think that it's not perfect, so I think that in that type of model, as we went out to schools and I've tried to listen to staff, examples of some of the things that you lose when you move to that, this type of model is you do lose some of your content expertise, like your grade level expertise, a counselor or a dean or social worker that's only working directly with seniors once every four years is not going to have the expertise that a counselor, social worker or dean has when they only work with juniors and seniors. There's going to be, have to be some transition of knowledge on an annual basis for that, so we do, I do think that we lose some of that content area expertise. I think there is also a realistic concern about time for staff. When we visited schools, even the, the schools or staff that when we visited said, yeah, this is a great model, we love this model, this. yeah, this is a great model, we love this model, this does help with our relationships. They also acknowledge that the freshman class and the senior class take more time and energy than the sophomore and the junior. They just, they're at transition parts of their lives in the school experience. And so, I think there's some valid hesitations around or concerns that staff have around, am I, I think these are coming from a good place, am I going to be able to service the seniors in the way that I want to service them? They want to feel good about the service they're providing, they want to make sure that it's quality service and they're concerned about that. I think that's a valid concern, uh, and something to consider. Um, I do think that in a, in a good model, at least when we went and visited schools, that a good model, um, can provide a balance of those different priorities. Um, and at some point, you, you do have to choose as an organization, uh, what your priority is. And I, um, so I do think it's possible for us to create a model, uh, that allows us to use this approach and do the best that we can with the other losses. So, do the best we can still at content area expertise and do the best that we can, uh, with the time that staff can spend with students. So, my suggestion would be to, um, at this point, we've really mostly looked at this, the looping concept. And if we go back to the priorities, uh, that you gave me, I do think that, uh, we should follow up with some of the staff suggestions around looking at other models or other ideas or approaches that either other schools have or that we have internally. Um, I do think we should take some time over the next six months to do that. We could also, at the same time, involve stakeholders. I haven't done that. All of our investigation has been just with the other schools that have the model. Um, if, if we want to implement something a year from now, I probably need to get it to you in October because it takes some time to implement and, uh, plan. Um, if we're, if whatever we propose, whether it's, um, looping or not looping, there's probably some staffing recommendations. I think that definitely from this process, regardless of looping, it's been pretty clear that student services would like us to consider the oversight of their team and the administrative support that we provide their team, as well as, um, like the classified staff support and the administrative resources, um, or support resources that we give them. So, there's probably some staffing, uh, recommendations that you should get from me. Um, if, in January-ish, depending on, uh, how we move forward. So, this would be my proposed model of a timeline. Uh, my memo to you references, I think, three proposed models. And I'm still trying to finalize those, uh, to get them to you, but I know that's part of my goal-setting process. Um, let's see, when we're reviewing other schools or other models, I think this gives, uh, staff a formal opportunity. So, one of the things that I think staff feel like they would like to do is just have an opportunity. And I haven't created that opportunity for them at this point. Our investigations have been really specific around the one model. Um, and I, I do think while it's good to go visit other schools, it is, there's not a lot of schools that have a split-campus model. So, um, I, I just want to recognize that there's some outreach that could happen, but there's also a lot of, uh, ideas here that we could, uh, be thinking through. Um, and if I brought you some type of proposal in October, I think it, you'd want me to include student-family perspectives. This, I, one of the learns from this is the idea of a student services curriculum. Um, another way I would describe that is, how do we memorialize in the same way that we memorialize outcomes for ninth-grade English or geometry? How do we memorialize and ensure that all students receive these services freshman year, these services sophomore year? We, we definitely, regardless of staffing models, we, we would get better if we, uh, worked on that. That's definitely a learn from talking to the schools that have tried to do looping. Um, I think we're doing a better job trying to bring in special populations, our EL students, our special ed students. So, I think a proposal from me should specifically identify that and you should ask me about that. I think we should look at start time. Um, and maybe we come up with nothing, but I think we should relook at that and see if there's a way we can think about start time at the two campuses differently. Um, and I do think it's important that we...
Staff.
I think that, I think we should try to figure out, is there a way? The easiest, we could today make it the same by just, uh, pouring more money into transportation.
Plus, there's more drivers.
Yep, yep. Yep, so what I, what I won, I wonder if we just need to go back to the table and see if there are other creative ways we could address start time. And then on the, the last item on there is I think we need to formally engage, uh, the staff union and say, like, what, what does this mean for you and your staff if we're to move forward with this? Um, so, so you as a board understand all the implications as opposed to doing this at the end of any type of change. I think, yeah, I think that's it.
That's an important note is, um, we, the seven of us, um, bring our different perspectives to the table. We need to hear from all these others, including the people that work here every day, um, our union, who speak on behalf. So, we can gather all this information and make an informed decision, whatever that may be. So, thank you, Dr. Danny. I appreciate that. Are there any discussions, questions regarding this topic?
Yeah, I just want to, like, I will be very interested to hear about student and family perspectives on this because we've heard from staff of other schools and some from our own staff about how this might be. And, um, I'll be curious, across the spectrum of students and families that we serve, what they value about their relationship with student services and what kinds of changes would be helpful or detrimental? Because I think as much as there are concerns about things like, um, like, um, helping students go to college, you know, like that makes senior year pretty intense. But, there are also benefits for students who have different primary needs besides getting to college that might benefit from this arrangement.
We also have the College Resource Center, so even if you, even if someone says, my opinion, even if someone says, oh, you know, like, we, we lose the, the information that, you know, that we'll be able to provide to a senior student, okay, that's fine, but we also have carry, right? And maybe we could even add an extra person to carry and build that support. So, they're not losing their knowledge and they continue to...
Our post-secondary counselors?
Right, mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I mean... Hold the expertise somewhere else.
Right, hold the expertise somewhere else.
Let me expand, too. Like, as we're sitting here talking about internships and all that, I mean, a post-secondary counselor only supports one path. Maybe we have a career and internship counselor, maybe we have a vocational counselor, maybe, I don't know what they are. But, it, there's different people that specialize and have relationships and can advise in that specialty area as our kids, um, decide the path that they want to go on. So, I, yeah, it's, absolutely. I think right now we're thinking of it with a lens that we know now. And, um, staffing, I can appreciate Dr. Danny mentioning staffing because I think no matter what we end up deciding, we all knew at some point, there's probably specialized staff that would need to come out of this. We, we can't just say we really want to see something and then not support it. Like, we're here to support our staff through all this. So, that may be in, in FTEs, um, at the end of the day.
Basic question I should have asked a year ago. You say there aren't very many split-campus models.
Mm-hmm.
How many are there? How many loop? How many don't? Anybody loop and go back? I mean...
Yeah, I, um, I can work on some of that. Most of the time what you see is, uh, if there's some type of split, there's like a freshman campus. I shouldn't say most of the time. I actually don't know if it's most of the time, often what you'll see in addition to the model that we have is a freshman campus and then a tenth or twelfth-grade campus. Um, of the two schools that we visited and tried to learn from, one of them was all-in on looping and had been doing that for twenty-some-odd years. Another, uh, the other school district had gone back and forth and they've...
They went back and forth?
They've gone back and forth over the last fifteen years.
Any, any nasty lessons we could learn from that? Why'd they do that?
Yeah, I, I think, um, the big lesson I took from them is they've been, uh, un, they haven't prioritized staffing.
Yeah. It was, it was very clear that the, the, um, level of planning for the long-term success of this model was different on the two campuses. So, the one, it sounded, it sounded like the history of it was that it was like a decision was made and then they started executing it and there were some problems. The staffing levels were not always appropriate and so they kept, every year, shifting how they managed it because, you know, they didn't have enough staff to do it the way it was intended.
You guys visited two schools?
Yes.
Are there a dozen out there? Are there, is this very rare?
I, I, I don't think there are a dozen split-campus models in, in Illinois.
Okay.
I think it's not common.
Okay.
Most are the traditional core year, at least in Illinois.
So, there's a limited amount we can learn from?
Definitely.
Okay.
Probably the best areas, if we're just considering how do we, what do we learn from, it's gonna be more conversations around what is, what do school districts do really well when they have an eighth to ninth-grade transition? I bet, I think that's probably more likely where we're gonna see some lessons out in the wild. Because every school district has an eighth to ninth-grade transition.
I'd be curious just to hear, you know, what internal staff ideas there are, you know, regarding the concerns about making connections with students, the transition from, you know, eighth grade to freshman, but then from sophomore to a new campus, um, the continuity, like solving some of those concerns. Um, you know, I'm, I'm just curious, what other thoughts there are that we haven't heard?
Yeah.
That's what he's now been tasked to do over the next six months is gain that information from the various constituents.
So, wondering, um, has a small pilot been considered? I know that might be a big undertaking, but...
Yes, I think, uh, we have not, I have not considered a pilot here. I, um, historically, some staff will say that we've piloted this in different iterations in the past twenty years in different ways. Um, but no, we haven't considered a pilot.
I'm concerned with, when we say pilot, like, you know, we've seen some historical perspective of a couple individuals following classes. But then that doesn't solve, like, the structural problems around that in supporting them. So, to do it in a small venture, um, I think would be, I don't know if we'd be able to represent how it would look as a whole without putting the admin in place and, and things like, I mean, it doesn't... I mean, when we compare the staffing, it was, I mean, when we heard from the teachers that went to go see some of these, uh, schools, yeah, some of the comments were, well, if we had the same staff, then we'd be able to do this. Well, we have very similar staffing already with the exception of some administrative, it seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I was looking at it. So, but there need to be some tweaks structurally to make it work. And so, I'd be afraid to do it in a smaller version for fear of feeling not supported fully.
I think Danny has his marching orders and he's gonna come back with quite a bit of stuff. So, if you're comfortable, I think we could probably move on. Um, we still have quite a few more topics.
If you're okay with this timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
I, I think we've just got, we just want to do a, a overview of our communication plan. We try to do this annually. So, we're gonna have Candy come up. Everybody, if you don't know Candy, Candy's our communication specialist.
You'll have to forgive me for this. I, I've got a little bit of a cold from my daughter, so, a little under the weather. Um, I didn't respond to your chat. If you want to show the video, that's fine, but, um, we can wait till the end or whatever you want to do. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'm gonna go ahead and show it. Is that okay? So, this is one of the projects that Candy worked on this year after some feedback from the board last year to try to tiptoe into video.
I love the reels, too. They, helping with the engagement, for sure, especially with the students.
Warren Township High School is a comprehensive high school.
These ones does the hair flip?
We have grades nine through twelve. There are two different campuses. We serve about thirty-six hundred students. They come every day. We're excited to be serving them and serving our community. Just to make our students that much better and more prepared to...
And I know this is kind of a long meeting with a lot of discussions, so I don't want to take a ton of your time. Um, you guys have the communications plan. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things that we've been working on. Um, they do have it, right? Because I, I couldn't open the attachments. Um, so, I included in an insight insert, uh, which pretty much just shows you, like, the growth of our, our social. And we're not looking for, like, explosive growth. We don't want to talk to the whole entire world. We want to talk to the people that live in our community and our families. Um, but it's going in the right direction and we tend to hold on to our followers, which is nice. Um, and then we also saw just a slight uptick in, um, the male population because last year it was like, I think it was like seventy-six percent female and this year it's seventy-four percent. So, we're, we're slowly breaking into getting men to pay attention to our, our stuff.
I take that personally. I'm a little upset with that, man.
Are you following or not? Like?
Yes, I am like a gold-label follower.
Gold-label.
I get little big highlights.
That's not a thing. Yeah. Um, we also, and I couldn't share this with you guys, I had a time because it just literally got sent out today, but, um, Warren was just featured in the ROE, uh, monthly newsletter. And they highlighted our CTE program, um, our career guide and a couple of our, like, new things like girls' flag football. Um, so it was kind of a nice, um, just highlight for us to kind of show them what we're doing. And in fact, the video that he was gonna show you, um, we linked that in there as well. So, that gives, gives everybody a chance to kind of look and see what the, like, everyday awesome and the Warren way. Um, so, we're, we've been focused on the reels and the videos and things like that and it really has helped. Um, one thing that I really want to highlight, this is something that I'm excited about, but also is definitely still a growth area, is we identified, um, a new audience archetype after we created the original plan, which is the hesitant family. So, this pretty much means anybody that wants to be more involved and more engaged, but might not feel comfortable, whether if it's a language barrier or they're coming from a different area that might not have, um, the same-sized school or just even transitioning from, you know, middle school to high school. But making sure that our communication is crafted in a way that they will feel comfortable and welcome here in whatever way they want to be. Um, there is, but again, growth area. Um, I'm excited to hopefully work with Dr. Moran's new future assistant because we did create a WTHS, um, Espanol page. And so, we could really streamline that and make it more consistent based on, like, what I'm posting and what they're posting and combine efforts. Um, I feel compelled to give Priscilla Vasquez a little shout-out because anytime I've ever needed anything translated, she is just so fast, so on it, so friendly about it. Um, and we also focused on more, um, not putting so many words in images because that doesn't get automatically translated, um, through the different platforms. But when you do it in the actual body of the, the post, um, that automatically gets translated. So, we're making sure that our information is accessible to all of our families. Um, forgive my notes, I could talk for, like, seven hours about this stuff. Um, so I'm trying to stay on, on topic. Um, another area of focus for me has been, um, kind of like the customer service aspect. I've heard you guys bring this up in a lot of board meetings. I'm not always physically in here, but I'm always watching from home if I'm not here. Um, so it's kind of a common theme that I've seen running through. So, um, and I just happen to kind of love customer service stuff. So, um, it's nice because people are starting to reach out to me, whether it's people that know me already and just know that this is what I do, strangers, media. I've gotten, been getting more, um, requests for just information and people coming to me and asking me questions. And so, instead of, you know, referring them to just the website or just call the main number, I've been kind of taking that work on for them so that they don't get bounced around. Um, and then I have, you know, a little more control, I have a little more control over, you know, the answer. And it helps me in the long run because now if I see multiple questions popping up, I know that, what, okay, this is like the fourth time I've been asked this, maybe there's a... Maybe there's a systemic thing that we're not addressing or we need to, you know, focus on. Um, and it also helps me just learn the answers to the questions. So hopefully I don't have to bother everybody as much in the future. A part of that also with customer service is community outreach. I've been trying to work with the, um, Township Center and our Township Supervisor, Elmer, Elmer Fallows, the Gurney Chamber of Commerce, I've been trying to go to their events, we joined the chamber last year. And senior centers, like when we did the Broadway Bingo Concert, I made sure that they all had the information, knew that they were welcome and it was a free show and just come on over, you're gonna love it. So I think that that is another growth area. Um, we guys were talking earlier about talking to parents and students, me and, um, Dr. Weisman have talked about doing more focus groups, we haven't quite figured out how to do that, um, because we want to bring in those hesitant family members, not just the people that are always here, always talking to us, so we're still kind of working on that a little bit. The website got updated last year, just so you guys know, because people always think this, I am not the webmaster, I did not create it. Um, just I happen to be on it a lot. And I'm working on a, like a communications specific section for the website, so new families or just any parent that wants to just know, like, okay, what do I do in this situation if there is an emergency? How do I reach out? Like, is there a chain of command? Who do I talk to? What's the flow here? Now we're gonna have access, old emails, old mailers, videos, things like that, but that's kind of a, a summer project. And then one other summer project that I've identified from my conversations with our, on our one-on-ones and also from the board is, um, I know the feeling of, like, coming on board as a new employee and desperately trying to learn, like, names, faces, titles. And it's overwhelming, I'm sure, Dr. Fields, you're feeling that right now.
Thank you.
And I know there is a, there is some kind of a document that you guys have had, but it's long and it's kind of complicated. So I'm, I'm hoping to figure out a way to kind of shorten that up and just make it a little bit more concise and even possibly add photos, so that when, like, somebody approaches you at a football game or a concert, you know that it's Dr. Kirk, or you know that it's, you know, a, a dean. I don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but like I said, that's a, a future project and I know that that's an area-
Dr. It's very common for a district to have, you know, you just upload your school picture next to the name.
So I reached out to, um, the person who does our yearbook, Elizabeth Logan Hay, and, um, we don't have pictures of everybody, because not everybody goes and gets their picture taken. So now it's gonna be like compiling those and getting headshots from people that don't, you know, have them. So there's a little bit of work there to be done, but like, it's a summer project, so when the crazy of May ends, that's something I can-
Or whenever we capture student photos for IDs or, you know, maybe it's just a natural opportunity for staff to stop by and also get the picture taken.
Yeah.
Because it has a couple different, not just for your purposes, but, uh, it's also nice to have updated pictures for, like, staff identification badges. I'm sure that we have a few that are maybe a few years old and-
My, my picture is terrible.
Yeah, so current, uh, current pictures are not a bad thing to have.
Like John twenty years ago.
There you go.
That's all I really wanted to highlight, so I'm open to any questions, concerns, whatever you might have.
Can I jump in here real quick, uh, perhaps as, uh, before the questions or comments come? Part of, I think, what Candy is trying to do and I think is doing a really good job at is work the system. So the communications plan that she has, she's tweaking it, but it generally outlines the framework and how we're approaching communications. That's why the archetype descriptions are so important. So when she's talking about, uh, she brought up the example of working with the township, that's because the communication plan says, hey, there's some archetypes around taxpayers, a couple different types of taxpayers, and Candy's thinking through, how do I engage these different types of architects? And, oh, maybe the township might be a good partner for that, so I think I, um, just want to bring that context to her work is it's, that plan is the framework she's working from.
I think you're doing a great job. I think that a lot of what, when, at least when I started on the board and we had no communications and what we originally would talk about, I think that while you've been on board, you have in your own way have been bringing that to life. Um, I love social media, so I love what you're doing. Um, I also really like, like I said, the reels, I really like when you, um, like, when you engage the, the community on social media with, like, a random question. Do you know what I'm talking about? Like, your random questions that everyone just kind of starts to-
Yeah.
To, to like really engage, um-
There's, yeah, there's some strategy behind that, because like the more they engage then, the more that, um, it pops up in their timeline and then I can invite them to follow.
I think that those engagements also fit in with community, even if you're not a parent. So I find that really smart.
I appreciate all of your engagement online and so it's good to see that that has increased. I do have a question, did you say that you're going to look into creating a Spanish page? Could you tell me more about that?
Sure, um, so we did create one last year, so there is an active WTHS Espanol page.
We need more engagement there though.
We need a lot more engagement.
What I mean by that is we need more followers, I looked at it the other day, it was only like twelve.
Yeah.
The question is, how do you bring in more followers to that page?
Yeah, so there's, um, I have a couple ideas behind it, but really we need, we need a person to be kind of thinking about it all the time, right? So when we do hire, um, Dr. Moran's assistant, I think that it'll just naturally start to happen. And when I came on, um, yeah, granted, there's been a lot of growth in our, like, following, but I wasn't starting from scratch, right? They were starting from literally zero. And, um, a lot of our, um, Spanish-speaking population, they already follow our page, so they don't necessarily feel the need to follow the new one, because we're not sharing original content that applies to them in a way that they're gonna be receiving it. So like BPAC meetings and things like that. So having that, have somebody that's, that's where, it's on their radar all the time and they're sharing that along with the things that every single parent wants to hear, I think that will, I think it'll grow a lot next year. That's, that's a guess, but-
So is that the intent?
That's the intent, oh, for sure.
Intentional content?
Yes.
The only reason I ask, because I, I am concerned with the two separate pages, because I don't want the perception to be that, you know, this is somewhere else for you versus us being really inclusive in the one page for everybody to engage.
Right, so that's why we're kind of, why I, I want to work with the person a lot, because, so that's what I referenced before, like, changing our images and not putting too much information in there that can't be translated. So I still want this to be, the regular page to be just our main page that everybody feels welcome and comfortable with. But then also, um, having content that is specific to that population in addition to what we're already sharing.
That makes sense, thank you.
How about adding, like, if you do, um, if you do a post, but then, I don't know if you can insert a link to where it's translated in Spanish? Or you do your post and then you do the Spanish translation underneath, because I've seen districts do that.
Yeah, so the, the hard part with that is then I need somebody to help me translate every single thing that I share and post. But if, like, if your settings are set to have Facebook in Spanish, it's gonna show up in your timeline in that language. Same with like our website, if you just click on the little toggle, it'll show you that communication and the language that you speak. So, um, it's not perfect, like, like I said, it's a growth area.
Talking a lot of that, yeah.
But I, but you're right though, because I don't want, if we're, if we're trying to communicate to the hesitant family, we want to remove those barriers, whatever they, they may be. That's why, like, again, just even just reaching out to women versus men, clearly we were catering to a specific audience, or we're trying to figure out a way to reach everybody.
Football.
Exactly, yeah. I should give a shout out to Amy, Lanagro as well.
Since we're talking about social media, I feel like this is an area where you two probably could shine a little more than us. I know, any kind of tech, you ask someone half your age, in this case, it's maybe a little more than half, but you, uh, do you have any comments on our social media presence or things that you think would help engage our students or?
I feel like it's pretty well-followed by most of the students in this school.
Is it?
I mean, I follow it.
And also I feel like, for like the hesitant families thing that you're referring to, I feel like maybe, I know it might be more difficult, but keeping it all in one social media page just to prevent, like, separating the two, I don't know if that makes sense, but like dividing, like, English-speaking families and Spanish-speaking families, like, and just combining it all in one page to avoid, like, isolating them from one another?
So there are, um, I usually try to, um, like, add them as a collaborator whenever I post anything, so it shows up in both places. Um, the idea came from Dr. Moran, because she wanted to include specific information for that population, and then she did that at, at her previous district, but that's a good point, and we can definitely, definitely talk about it, um, moving forward. And then when you guys talk about following the page, I laugh, because when it comes to Instagram, I have, we have a lot of student followers, when it comes to Facebook, there is like seven. It's all ladies my age or older, yeah.
Facebook for the families, for parents, and then you have Instagram for all the student populations.
Yeah, so I try and share them in both places, but there are times when there's a different audience for which platform I'm posting on, for sure.
I want to respond to Tony's question to the students with the students' perspective. So I was sitting at the, um, the game, uh, the, the special rec game, the basketball game.
Best day ever?
Best day ever, and I had one of the young women who's a senior now, who I've watched growing up for years and is like a daughter to me, sitting with me. And when Candy came over and started talking to me and left, this young lady looked at me, she says, oh my gosh, that's Candy, she's a rock star. She has been, like, elevated to Warren Township, like, Hall of Fame already, above the students.
Oh, yeah, she, to them, she's influencer, not communicator.
Yeah, that's, that's the word, right?
They're probably cringing so hard right now, it is not at all.
You know, when I saw, um, one of my kids is graduating this year and there's this graduation checklist and I appreciated in there, I remember seeing it, something like, don't forget to follow our accounts. Whoever thought of doing that, great, because as our kids leave, um, they still have a heart, you know, this is theirs, this is where they went to high school and is, we can build capacity in that, and we always talk about foundation work and alumni and it'll be neat to see where that goes, but that starts now, as our kids stay connected with us as they leave, so I'm glad to hear that you're, you guys and your friends are following, so that's great.
And I feel like, like, the Instagram appeal to students is also pretty helpful, because then, like, let's just say I'm having a dinner conversation with my mom, I could, like, take one message and pass it on to the other. And like, I mean, I'm not from a Spanish-speaking family, so like, on top of that, if I know what's going on, I could translate it to my mom. And it's like, it, it no longer like leads, leads to like hesitant families, because then now my mom's also aware of what's going on.
We also, um, started sending the weekly email to, um, we originally were just sending it to parents and staff. And then I got feedback from students that they actually thought it'd be helpful to receive it themselves, that way they could share important information with their parents. And so we started doing that this year as well, so thank you for bringing that up.
Great work.
Yeah, anytime you get a compliment from a teenager, it's like-
If it were just your own, right?
That's not gonna happen.
Candy, did you have anything else for us?
No, unless you wanted to show the video if it's ready, but I think you guys have seen it, so, for time reasons.
I think, yeah, the, yeah, you're, we're probably your biggest followers, so we've, we've, we've seen your work.
We're pretty into you.
Um, all right, so just, uh, I think, were there any other topics under this? All right, we have multiple adjournments tonight, apparently. Um, one to bring us out of committee of the whole and the next, and then the other one to end our meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting. Uh, we can do, uh, voice votes, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, motion passes. And then, before I do the second adjournment, um, I wanted to make sure to, I'm gonna channel my, uh, my inner Rob and Michelle at the moment, and want to make sure to mention that even at a govern, governance level, um, we are respectful, resilient, engaged now and always, go Blue Devils. And with that being said, um, I'll just motion to adjourn the meeting. Roll call vote.
Motion by Demonte and second by Anderson, Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Dr. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right, time's eight fifty-one, have a good night, everyone.